will please come to order. The time is approximately 1:05. And I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Council President, before I call the roll, I would like to read a statement. As a reminder to all meeting attendees seeking parking validation for tonight's meeting, please be sure to scan the QR code located in the back on the table near the chamber's entrance to claim your discount. If you do not already have a Metropolis account, you will need your license plate number to set up the account in advance of receiving your discount. Please be sure to complete this prior to the end of today's meeting and as the QR code will be removed at the conclusion of today's meeting. As a reminder to all in attendance, this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on the county's YouTube page. Calling the roll, Ms. Turner.
Present.
Mr. Hauser. Mr. Hauser is absent at the moment. Ms. Simon is absent at the moment. Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Sweeney.
Present.
Mr. Castleberry is absent at the moment. Mr. Gallagher. Mr. Schlepper.
Here.
Ms. Conwell. Mr. Jones.
Here.
Council President Miller.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. And the next item on the agenda is public comment. And I would ask if anybody has signed in.
Lou.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Lou, the nobody is here to support all the important vital health and human services here. Homeless Services, Adams Board, and all other services to have proper fundings in order to fight against the current horrible politic situation. Because of the politics in Capitol Hills in Washington, DC, now people here will face way more obstacles to even survive throughout these two years. Please understand, you have a big job to watch out for our money. But this money we have from all the taxpayers, should they go into something like Brown Stadiums, New County Jail, or they should go to these vital services to make sure at least we do not lose lives in this community? People can actually pass these two years. Otherwise, we will lose population more and faster than you think. City of Cleveland already has to shrink the 17 seats down to 15. How about you people? If health and human services cannot be properly funded, the consequence will be a disaster you guys don't want to be responsible for, right? So please, do the right thing. Thank you.
Dr. Kristin Inigas?
For the record, Councilman Hauser is present.
Council President Miller, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Dr. Kristin Inigas, and I serve as the Child Abuse Pediatrician for the Cuyahoga County Child Protection Team. I split my time between Canopy Child Advocacy Center and Rainbow Babies Children's Hospital. I have almost 20 years of experience working with children who have been abused. And I truly understand the impact that any form of abuse has on their physical health as well as on their emotional health. Services provided by a child advocacy center like Canopy speak to the needs of the whole child and the family, giving the child a voice, whether that's figuratively or literally, and help the child and family heal from their trauma and develop resilience. Know that the work done at Canopy, whether it's a medical evaluation, a forensic interview, or advocacy services, is very hard. Sometimes it's heartbreaking. And the staff of Canopy keep coming back to work every single day to do that hard work. Now that work is being threatened by a looming funding cut, a whopping 28% of the total budget. Unfortunately, the rate of child abuse will not decrease by 28%, just our ability to If you think for an instant that any other agency would be capable of filling this gap, that's just misinformed. To be impactful, CACs rely on highly skilled staff with extensive experience, and they work in facilities that always put the child first. Very important. So we made a promise to this community, a promise that every child in Cuyahoga County, no matter where they live, will be met with the same high standard of care and offered the same opportunities for healing. We need to keep... We need to keep that promise. I urge you to continue your full support of the Child Protection Team and Canopy Child Advocacy Center. Thank you.
Lauren Schenk.
County Council President Miller, Finance Committee Chair Turner, and members of County Council, my name is Lauren Schenk. I'm speaking on behalf of Northern Ohioans for Budget Legislation Equality, or NOBOL. As we have listened to the presentation of the proposed Cuyahoga County budget and read its details, we are deeply disturbed by the cuts to such critical programs as housing, healthcare, mental health, and children's services. We recognize that most of these cuts are necessary due to substantial funding cuts from the current federal administration, Congress, and with no support from our governor or general assembly. We also recognize that these cuts to critical needs are almost certainly going to get worse over the next three years of this administration. Consequently, NOBOL believes it is critical for Cuyahoga County to find ways to generate additional income to preserve and sustain critical programs and services. Therefore, NOBOL is asking County Council and County Executive Ronain to establish and convene a task force composed of elected officials, administrative officials, and local leaders to evaluate and recommend new sources of income to protect critical needs. For example, one option is to reconsider the amendment that was proposed by Councilwoman Turner during the extension of the quarter percent sales tax, which would have allowed for funds from the Justice Center Capital Projects Fund to be used for reentry services, pretrial services, alcohol and drug treatment services, mental health and behavioral health services, and job or vocational training programs. As we move forward in these very difficult times when our federal government is seeking to abandon our low-income and vulnerable populations, we must maintain the essential and effective programs that exist for our residents in Cuyahoga County. We strongly urge you to immediately establish this task force to save our vital, critical needs, programs, and services. Thank you.
Jennifer Driscoll.
Council President Miller, members of council, thank you for allowing me to address you today. My name is Jennifer Driscoll, and I'm on the board of Canopy Child Advocacy Center and have been working with Canopy since before it opened. And I'm here today to address the proposed cuts to the Child Protection Team and to address recent questions you've had around program underspending in the program's first two years. Let me be direct. Canopy's underspending was not due to inefficiency or lack of demand. It was the responsible phased implementation of a system that had never existed before in Cuyahoga County. When the Child Protection Team began, there was no unified three-hospital model for responding to severe child abuse. We weren't simply expanding upon an existing program. We were building life-saving infrastructure from the ground up. Delays in spending were due to several factors, all of which have now been resolved. Chief among those factors, one, recruitment of a child abuse pediatrician who you've now heard from today. It took time. Just months after the CPT contract was finalized, Metro Health and University Hospitals' long-serving child abuse pediatricians had resigned and retired. This required the hospitals to engage in a two-year national search for a child abuse-trained pediatrician, and we are happy to have her here today. Second factor, lower-than-expected referrals from outside partners. Over 95% of referrals to the Child Protection Team were expected to come from Cuyahoga County DCFS and other outside partners. In years one and two of the contract, due to legitimate issues that were nonetheless outside of Canopy's control, referrals were significantly lower than expected. Referrals in recent months have reached the levels we expected. A third factor, execution of memorandum of understanding, the MOUs. Developing and executing new memorandum of understanding across the hospital systems has taken time, long billing cycles, some contractors, some partners such as University Hospitals.
Please conclude your remarks.
Thank you. I really appreciate your team, and I thank you for your time and continued commitment to child safety. We really need this money. We beg you.
Michael Searing.
Thank you, council, for holding these hearings. I'm Michael Searing, Chief Program Officer for Lutheran Metropolitan Ministry. LMM operates one of Ohio's largest shelters at 2100 and 2020 Lakeside. Cuyahoga County is our largest funder. We serve over 400 people each night, 3,000 annually, and we manage overflow shelter for singles and families. This work forms the foundation of the critical safety net. Last year, LMM provided 130,000 bed nights. Using the federal benchmark of $65 per bed night, this would typically cost $8.3 million. Our fully funded 26 budget of $6.2 million would deliver the same outcomes for 25% less saving, $2 million. The county's proposed 26 budget funds LMM at only $4.35 million. This 12-month budget proposal was based on a 10-month 2025 contract and one-time funding for operating our expanded footprint at 2020 Lakeside. Combined, these factors create a $1.85 million shortfall. To protect the county's safety net, LMM requests a more manageable 10% cut to our 26 budget going from $6.2 to $5.5 million to reflect the county's strained capacity as well as our current costs. This would allow LMM to maintain existing services and programs. If the county proceeds with the deeper cuts and fund LMM at 4.35, we will be forced to entirely eliminate the following essential programs: transportation for seasonal overflow shelters, 500 trips last year; family overflow shelter, 250 families; and our Family Flex Fund program has 600 people with a 93% success rate. We urge council to continue this success in homeless services by rejecting the proposed budget and instead work with LMM on a compromised 10% cut to $5.5 million that will allow us to continue operating the shelter and the other essential programs which would be scaled back. Thank you.
Brittany Moore.
Hello. My name is Brittany Moore, and I am here with my colleagues Bob Duran, Kitty Worschowski, Bailey Capel, Abby Graffmeyer, and Kay Schwab from College Now Greater Cleveland. Thank you for this opportunity to provide public comment today. As council is evaluating which budget cuts will have to be implemented, we want to underscore our gratitude for its support of CTAG, and specifically the work that College Now does with them. The closing the achievement gap program in Ohio was initiated to assist at-risk students in achieving high school graduation. It was established under the leadership of Governor Strickland and requires school districts with a graduation rate of 80% or less to implement a CTAG program. The program focuses on identifying students at risk of not progressing academically and provides them with support through linkage coordinators who act as mentors and advocates for students. Our exposure trips are in addition to this incredible work that the CTAG linkage coordinators are doing at their schools each day. Each trip that we plan provides 40 students from any of these high schools with the opportunity to visit multiple types of post-secondary institutions, experience cultural institutions in the cities that we visit, and get to know their peers at other schools, and so much more. So why are these trips so important? They make the connection between high school graduation and post-secondary goals. These exposure trips connect what they're learning in high school to real-world opportunities and how post-secondary credentials and degrees will help them attain these opportunities. A student quote, "This trip helped me narrow down my choices and understand what to look for when choosing a college." Post-trip surveys and comments attest to the impact of these trips. More than 75% of trip participants agree or strongly agree that because of these trips, they are more interested in going to college after school and that they learned more about colleges that they would not have known otherwise. Another student quote, "Before this trip, I wasn't sure if college was for me. Seeing the different campuses made me realize there are so many options out there for me." Lastly, I want to close with a comment from a linkage coordinator. So, good afternoon. I am writing in regard of the College Now exposure trips. I feel these trips are very important for several reasons, one being exposure. Most of our ladies have no idea that college is an option for them or even consider it because they simply just do not know what's out there. I have one young lady who was a freshman at Kent State playing basketball.
Please conclude.
And she made that decision because of one of our College Now trips. So, thank you for your time.
Mike Matoney.
Good afternoon, Council President Miller and other council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. Again, my name is Mike Matoney. I'm the CEO of New Directions. New Directions provides residential and recovery housing services for adolescents and young adults who have both mental health and substance abuse disorders. I'm here to speak about the Adams Board of Cuyahoga County's reduction in funding in this past year, in 2025, and its effects on your constituents that are seeking services from New Directions. The funding issue is that the Adams Board of Cuyahoga County will not provide room-and-board costs that are equitable with what DCFS and the Cuyahoga County Juvenile Court will reimburse New Directions for. Actually, they provide us room-and-board rates that are more adult-centric than adolescent-centric. Because of this fact, your constituents have used New Directions 34 times in 2024 and only 14 times in 2025. And currently, right now on our waiting list are members of families in Councilman Jones' district, Councilman Miller's district, Councilperson Meredith Turner's district. We ask that you talk to the Adams Board and advocate with us so these young people can get into treatment and not be on waiting lists where they linger and do not get the services that they so desire. The cost of this is $165,000 a year. And based on a $40 to $60 million budget, I think it can be fit in. I'll end with this. The Pacific Institute of Research and Evaluation estimates that for every dollar spent on adolescent rehab, it yields a $9 to $12 cost avoidance in our community. Thank you very much.
Corey Taylor.
Good afternoon, Council President Miller and members of council. My name is Corey Taylor. I'm the CEO of Frontline Service, and I'm here to speak about how the proposed county budget could weaken the county's safety net at a time when more residents than ever need the help. I want to begin by saying I understand the difficult decisions that you're facing with the county budget cuts. These choices are never easy. But I also feel obligated to bring to your attention the very real impact these cuts are going to have on the county's most vulnerable residents, people who depend on crisis and housing programs, that keep them safe, stable, and connected to care. Executive Chris Ronain's proposed budget includes a $4 million cut in 2026 to the Adams Board, resulting in a 20% cut to all providers, which would be $1 million in cuts to frontline service programs that are at the core of the county's crisis response system, our safe haven, adult mobile crisis team, child response teams, crisis stabilization unit, traumatic loss response team, and care response team. These teams answer the call for help 24 hours a day, seven days a week, when residents are in crisis, preventing hospitalizations, incarceration, and homelessness. In 2024, the crisis stabilization unit served 378 clients, diverting 50 people from the emergency department and helping 157 people step down from inpatient care. That's 700 hospital bed days saved and $1.8 million in healthcare costs. The crisis unit only costs one-third of the price of hospitalization. The budget also is eliminating the North Point Transitional Housing Program that provides safe housing and job supports for 250 individuals. We now have a building secured for that program, and we can restart that program in 2026 with additional funding. I respectfully ask you to restore North Point funding and protect the Adams funding. Thank you.
Abby Graffmeyer.
Good afternoon. My name is Abby Graffmeyer, and I'm here with my colleagues from College Now Greater Cleveland. My colleague Brittany spoke about the CTAG program, so I just want to reiterate some of her statements about the impact that specifically the trips that we plan for these students has on their lives. The students participating in the CTAG programs are already identified as at risk of not graduating high school. Our exposure trips provide access to these high school students who might not otherwise have it. For many of these students, these trips are the first time for them leaving the community, staying in a hotel, and imagining a future outside of what they've already known. These trips give them access to campuses, professions, and cities that expand their sense of what's possible. When students can see their future, they're already more motivated to work towards it. They also foster community and support. We know how important community is for our young people's development and how little safe opportunities there are for our students from such a variety of high schools in the area. A student quote, "My favorite part about the trip was visiting the colleges and being able to experience campus and doing the activities with new individuals that I met. It also opens up their students' worlds. These trips allow students to practice professionalism, independence, and social skills that extend into their school and personal lives." I want to finish by ending with the rest of the quote from one of our CTAG linkage coordinators at Rhodes High School. She said, "I've said for my very first trip that my favorite part of my job is taking students on college tours and watching them look around, ask questions, take in the information, and mostly when they turn around and look at me with a smile on their face, saying, 'Miss, I can do this.'" It makes me so happy for the ladies to realize that they can do it, they can go to college too. When we walk onto a college campus, their eyes just light up, and they realize that there are opportunities for them, opportunities they never knew existed in these trips. So many things are being taken away from our young children. This should not be one of them. It gives them hope. Thank you.
Kitty Worschowski.
Hi. Good afternoon. I'm Kitty Worschowski from College Now, along with the rest of my colleagues. I promise I'm the last person. But we do have one other area of interest to discuss with you, and as most of you know, the council has been so amazing and supportive of the county scholarship that we offer, and we are facing a proposed 20% cut. So I just wanted to remind council, and I know you know this, but just really reiterate how impactful this scholarship is for our students, your constituents, their families, and for the region. The program, the scholarship, began for the school year of 2013-14, and over the last 12 years, we have one more year still to include, we're waiting on numbers, 855 students have been awarded these renewable scholarships. 78% of these students have graduated or are still enrolled, and of those who have graduated, 81%, that's 347 students, have attended a post-secondary institution in the county. We all know that if you go to the school within the county, one of our wonderful institutions, you are more likely to stay, stay local, and contribute to the economy. So not only are these scholarships impactful in and of themselves, but we at College Now also wrap our students with our mentoring program and with other supports on campus. Some of those supports are also supported via this scholarship, and I think that's one of the many reasons why the success rate for these students far exceeds the 47.5% success graduation rate for Pell Grant students, which is the equivalent for students who are getting our scholarship there, also Pell Grant. So again, I just want to thank you. We know that you are faced with some really difficult choices, and we appreciate your consideration.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Simon is in attendance. Rich Robbins.
Thank you very much, councilpeople. I appreciate the difficulty.
Mr. Robbins, if you could state your name for the record, please.
Yes, I was just coming to that. It's Richard Robbins. I appreciate, I wish I could just write a check. I wish I was one of the five or six billionaires in the country, could just write a check and take the monkey off all your back, and these wonderful people that are speaking here and the very good causes. One of you talked recently about Sophie's Choice, and I really feel for you because you're facing that kind of a situation. Who am I? I'm Dr. Richard Robbins. I'm a 20-plus-year proactive board member, including pass board chair of Frontline Services. I certainly understand the vicissitudes of budgeting. chair of Frontline Services. I certainly understand the vicissitudes of budgeting, having been an elected official and responsible for global budgets for a Fortune 500 company. At least you don't have to deal with foreign currency effects. I respectfully request your thoughtful consideration for the Adams Board and the knock-on effects of the $1 million lost in funding for frontline services, crisis service programs, and specifically restoration of the North Point Transitional Housing Program. It's very seductive to cut health and human service programs from those who are relatively voiceless. Matter of fact, you are part of their voice, and I'm sure you take that responsibility very seriously. These cuts are suboptimal from a financial standpoint. There are many studies that have been shown, that have shown reductions in services for helping people move from homelessness actually reduce the cost and provide financial savings over a period of time. In other words, pay me now or pay me a lot more later. Please consider these comments as you review the budget and the unintended consequences. Respectfully, Richard Robbins.
Jim Riesing?
Good afternoon, Council President Miller, members of the council. My name is Jim Riesing. I'm a born and raised Clevelander and proud Clevelander and also a board member of Frontline Service, and here to talk about the same thing, the proposed budget cuts. I also have personal experience with mental health crisis and homelessness in my own family. So I've seen firsthand, you know, the impact that services like Frontline and others provide can have on our community, the safety net that it provides, and I'm also seeing when it doesn't work and what happens when people slip through the cracks, and that's why I got involved with Frontline in the first place. The proposed cuts for us and looking at the services that we provide to kind of the most vulnerable fellow Clevelanders would impact the Mobile Crisis Team that responds to 988 calls in the community, our Traumatic Loss Team, which works with Cleveland Homicide to go take care of people who have witnessed, particularly children witnessed homicide in their own families and in their own homes. And we all talked about the North Point facility that has 250 people living in it, 113 of those young adults who will be on the street and not have a roof over their heads. There's not another place for them to go. So, you know, I was born and raised here. Clevelanders are hardworking. We look after each other. We take care of each other, and this is an opportunity where we have to take care of the people that are fellow Clevelanders that need our help the most. I know you guys have a hard job to do, but we trust you to own this and trust you to make the right decisions. Go find the money somewhere else and take care of the people who need it. Thank you.
Rick Oliver?
Good afternoon, President Miller and county council members. My name is Rick Oliver. I'm the Director of Crisis and Trauma Services at Frontline Service, a position I've held for more than 20 years. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I'm here to ask you to reconsider the proposed $4 million funding reduction to the Adams Board. These cuts would deeply affect programs that save lives and reduce costs across the county. Let me be clear. There are few things that are more important than saving lives while you can save money doing it, and that's exactly what our crisis and trauma programs do. They reduce behavioral health calls, related calls to 911. They prevent unnecessary emergency room visits, and they cut down on costly inpatient hospital stays. But with less funding, we'll have fewer staff. With fewer staff, fewer people in Cuyahoga County will receive the help they need when they need it most. A few programs at risk, you've already heard a little bit about the Mobile Crisis Team. We received already over 15,000 requests for services this year alone. 20% of those people are at risk for suicide, and Cuyahoga County lost over 200 people to suicide last year. Our Crisis Stabilization Unit is a 15-bed facility that provides hospital-level care at a third of the cost of traditional hospital stays. This program has been serving this community for over 50 years. A care response team that pairs clinicians with people who have lived through a crisis, and they respond to people in crisis in the community where they are. And last, our Traumatic Loss Response Program, who supports families after someone in their families died by homicide, helping them to begin that healing process. These programs are not just services. They are essential. They save lives. They save money, and they make our community stronger. So today, I ask you to please protect the funding for these vital programs. The people of Cuyahoga County are counting on us. Thank you.
Ed Gimmercheck?
Good afternoon, President Miller and county council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Ed Gimmercheck, the Executive Director of Y-Haven, a program of the YMCA of Greater Cleveland. Every day at Y-Haven, we serve people at the hardest crossroads of their lives, men and women who are homeless, reentering the community from incarceration, and battling addiction and mental illness. They come to us looking for a safe place to live and a real chance to heal and recover. For more than 30 years, Y-Haven has provided both treatment and housing under one roof over at the CMHA Stokes Mall on East 60th and Woodland. And any given day, we serve about 210 individuals, helping them recover, find work, reconnect with loved ones, and move into permanent housing. Last year alone, 605 residents completed our program. 78% moved into stable housing. More than half found jobs and started job training. And these aren't just numbers. They represent people who are no longer on the streets, in jail, or in emergency rooms. They represent lives restored. The proposed Adams Board cut of 20%, about $150,000 for Y-Haven, would directly reduce the number of people that we can serve, including those struggling with opioid addiction, who often arrive without insurance. These are not optional services. They are life-saving, and when people can't get our help, the costs show up elsewhere in shelters, our hospitals, and our jails. We respectfully urge you to reduce the proposed Adams Board cuts and continue investing in recovery, housing, and hope for Cuyahoga County. Thank you for your time and your continued commitment to the residents of this county that we love. Thank you.
That concludes the public comment portion for today's meeting.
Thank you very much, and it is now time for me to turn the gavel over to the Chairperson of Finance and Budget, Councilwoman Turner, to run the budget hearing.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the item into the record?
Resolution 2025-0293, adopting the 2026-2027 Biennial Operating Budget and Capital Improvements Program and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Thank you. We are reconvening the Finance and Budgeting Committee to continue our review of the 2026-2027 Biennial Operating Budget and Capital Improvements Program. Today, we continue to hear from divisions within the Health and Human Services, departments, and agencies that stand closest to our residents when they are in moments of need, transition, and uncertainty. And I want to recognize the staff, the providers, and community partners who hold that work both with skill and heart. The compassion, patience, and perseverance you bring each day sustains the very fabric of our safety net. Your labor is not invisible, and your impact is deeply valued. We also understand that the perspectives and concerns brought forward in these hearings reflect a real and urgent dedication to the people of this county. Those concerns deserve to be heard and considered. Our responsibility in these committees is to hear these presentations with clarity and care and to understand the work that is being done and to consider the realities and recommendations before us in a thoughtful and informed way. And with that, we will hear from the Office of Homeless Services, the Office of Early Childhood, Invest in Children, Family and Children, First Counsel, and the Office of Reentry. We'll begin with the Office of Homeless Services, Director Ross. We'll hear from David Merriman first. All right. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is David Merriman. I'm the Director of Health and Human Services, caring for our presentation that we began last Monday. I think you'll hear from each of our directors. In one case, we have an interim director, and I'll be available to answer any questions, but I'd like to just go ahead and turn over the presentation to Levine Ross. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon to the chair, to the councilmembers. My name is Levine Ross, Director of the Office of Homeless Services, and I'll start my presentation. So the Office of Homeless Services is the lead agency of the Continuum of Care and Homeless Emergency Response Crisis System within Cuyahoga County. We have 44 provider networks and over two, which is approximately $52 million in renewable HUD funding on an annual basis, and that funding is through, also additional funding through levy. It is important to note that HUD does not allow for the continuum to use emergency shelter, funding for emergency shelter. Cuyahoga County's emergency crisis response solely lies on HHS levy funding. Here you'll see the budget overview, which has the previous year's actuals, the current year's projections, and also the recommended budget for 2026 and 2027. On our subsidy reduction slide, you will see our HHS levy-funded providers. Essentially in the past, we have had other funding sources to help supplement shelter costs. Those shelter resources are no longer available. So right now, what you are seeing are providers that are funded solely through HHS levy dollars. We were able to supplement some of those funding cuts with grant funding through our CE Expansion Grant, and so those are the ones that you see highlighted here. And moving on to strategic considerations, coordinated entry redesign. As identified through a coordinated entry assessment, some participants required specialized housing stabilization services to help resolve their housing crisis needs. As part of our Continuum of Entry Expansion Grant, additional housing navigators will be employed to help develop housing plans that specifically focus on long-stay or supports and linkage to outside community resources. We are also focusing on housing navigators that have an expertise in specific housing markets in order to house specific populations. So for example, we have a housing navigator through CMHA that has been very successful in connecting some of our older adults in the shelter with CMHA housing units. Next year, we'll be releasing a request for qualifications for all of our shelter inventory, and this will give us a chance to standardize our shelter model, where shelter will be prioritized based on an enhanced model versus low barrier. Shelter is not housing. It is an emergency crisis response. So with that said, participants who are actively working their housing plans and need shelter for immediate short-term stay will be housed in an enhanced shelter space. Those who are not actively working their plans will be in a more low-demand barrier space, where we can actually do more intensive case management with them. The women's and men's renovation. So we are currently renovating the women's shelter at Norma here and also the East 23rd Building. Both of those, well, the east side of the Norma here will be completed August of 2026, as well as the East 23rd Building. Renovations for the west side of Norma here will be completed in 2027. We have not begun renovations for 2100 Lakeside. However, we do need to be intentional in considering when we want to start those renovations, because we may need to utilize the Walton location, as well as the St. Paul's Overflow location as well. So challenges that we'll be facing coming up. Information coming down from our HUD offices regarding our new 2026 NOFO release, Notice of Funding Opportunities, indicates that all COCs will see a 30% cap on funding for permanent supportive housing projects and rapid rehousing. In addition to the funding cap, current projects will need to quickly pivot into a transitional housing model with a mandatory mental health and treatment component. So this kind of goes beyond what our housing first approach in the past, where we were able to provide housing without any barriers. Now there is going to be a treatment or mental health component. Also, some of our challenges is we are now seeing pre-pandemic service levels, which is also leading to additional operational costs within the shelter. So in 2019, we were serving at least about 6,330 people. We're back up to 6,490 people as of 2024. So it dipped a little bit during COVID, due to being able to successfully divert individuals from the shelters, but now we're starting to see those levels climb back up. Finally, I'll just talk about the OHS staffing levels. More than ever, it is an immediate need to increase staffing levels for the Office of Homeless Services. The funding criteria changes at the federal level will result in shorter response times to our applications. So when we used to have maybe two months, now we'll have only one month to respond. Staff also must be very intentional in reevaluating grant opportunities that might be underperforming and need amendment in order to maintain that funding. So there'll be a lot of work behind the scenes that staff will have to adjust to as it relates to some of these new funding criterias. So it's imperative that we are properly staffed to ensure we can continue the successful function as a COC lead with these sweeping changes that could potentially upend our homeless response system. So I'll stop there if there are any questions.
Thank you, Director Ross. Start with Councilwoman Simon.
Thank you. Just wanted an opportunity to ask a question of the new director. Can you elaborate on the challenge where you said that transitional housing now has a mandatory component for mental health treatment? Is that going to be an impediment, then, to being able to provide transitional housing to the more general populace?
Well, right now, with our permanent supportive housing projects, those are usually, those are supported where individuals do not have to go through any type of mental health treatment or support or recovery support. So with some of those projects now, once, if we have a cap at 30%, some of those projects will have to transition over into possibly a transitional housing component, and then we would also have to look at how we then serve individuals that are currently in that housing stock and, you know, add a housing component or add a component that would entail mental health or treatment for those individuals.
Again, David Merriman, I just want to add one additional point. I think the director is correct about adding in this element of mental health counseling. I mean, it's needed. It's important, and we support it. However, we have to see that that's- However, we have to see that that's available in the community. I think the second thing we should recognize is we have not been funding transitional housing because it hasn't been a priority from HUD. And it's not to say that there isn't transitional housing available in the community, but it hasn't been the focus of HUD. So HUD is, and this administration is taking a very sharp turn to go towards transitional housing. So, it's both components together, the requirement for mental health services as well as the requirement for transitional housing. They're compounding the change here. So, I think we're going to need our partners to work this out and figure out what the best way forward is.
So, it's a matter of having providers in place and funding in place to have this other component, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Council President Miller.
So, Madam Chair, to the director, and again, congratulations and welcome to your new role.
Thank you.
And I'm, I'm not clear about the 30% cap. What is being capped at 30% of what?
So, we essentially get in a roughly about $37 million, anywhere between $37 to $49 million for permanent supportive housing and rapid rehousing. If we are capped at 30%, that would take us to, and you can correct me if my math is correct, Council President, that would take us to 11 million, between 11 million to 15 million cap.
So, are you saying you're only going to get 30% of what you were previously getting?
Right.
That's a huge reduction.
Absolutely.
Wow, okay, thank you.
Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. And again, congratulations on your new position.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on that same question, the 30%, what is that in actual dollars?
37 million. We get between 37 million to 49 million, uh, million dollars, yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you.
Miss you.
Thank you.
Did you say you have 44 providers?
44 network providers, yes. Within our continuum of care.
As, as a new director, I would highly recommend, and I'll be telling other people this, to do a deep dive on crossover duplicity. We're kind of scraping here for money. And maybe start looking at, are these providers providing at the level we expect?
Got it.
Helpful. It's in front of us now, but that should always be a focus.
Got it.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Vice Chair.
Through the Chair, to Levine, to Director Levine Ross. I know we kind of talked about this off sidebar as it was coming before us. But Director, will there be cuts? Well, you stated the 30% cuts that are coming from the federal government. Will those cuts also impact some of these providers that are here today?
If they're providing permanent supportive housing, it will directly impact them. But I think, I will go as far as to say it could also impact providers, even our shelter providers as well because every, everything is a trickle-down effect. So, as far as us providing rapid rehousing within our shelters, or if there's a mental health component, how do we house individuals who may not want to have that, you know, be a part or take in that mental health component? So, it's going to affect the whole continuum of care in how we actually provide housing for individuals. Because if we can't provide housing, appropriate housing, whether that be shelter or permanent supportive housing based on this new criteria, then we're going to have individuals who are basically homeless and have nowhere to go. So, it's going to affect the entire continuum, not just a pocket of providers.
And the reason I brought that up is just to, for the people that stand before us for public comment, to let them know that are asking for us to put money back into their budget, how critical and how dire this is all impacting all of us. It's a cyclical effect. So, it's not that any of us want to cut or redistribute funds. We have a mandate of certain things that we're supposed to take care of. So, thank you for that line of questioning, Director.
Thank you. Mr. Hauser.
Through the Chair, to Director Ross, and congratulations again. I don't, I don't envy your position. I'm sure you don't envy ours either. Can you tell me more about these, the staffing levels challenges? Has there been a plan, is there a plan in place to address these issues?
No specific plan in place, but our office has operated at very low staffing levels for a long time now. It is only technically six of us. We could utilize two more staff members, including a deputy-level position just for the everyday work and load that this office brings in, not just with the federal funding, but also the crisis intervention that we, that we do with, with our local providers. For example, North Point and working through how to rehouse those individuals that were displaced due to the building. So, there's a lot of crisis intervention going on as well as providing funding for contracts, as well as applying for HUD annual funding and then reevaluating those HUD grants if they're underperforming and trying to analyze what would be another program to utilize. So, it's a lot of pressure on six people. And I will say I'm on the ground doing the work with the rest of the team, for sure.
We appreciate you. My last question is, will these cuts affect the construction over at Norma Hill in any way? I know you talked about transition over there, but will these cuts affect that being able to be done, that project?
Well, we have utilized ARPA funding for Norma Hill, so I think we're fine as far as the funding to continue the renovations for Norma Hill. However, with the renovations, that will bring up operational cost or, and I should also say, not just operational, but building maintenance cost because of those renovations. New, you know, a new building with a lot of new different features. So, those are things that we're going to have to look at in the future as far as funding for some of our providers who maintain that building. And that's also what we may need to look at also when we start the renovations for the men's shelter as well.
Appreciate it, Director. Thank you.
Madam Chair, a couple of follow-up questions.
Sure.
So, the 30% cap, is this something that seemed to come out of the new federal administration or was this in the works prior to that?
This is coming out of the new federal administration coming down from the administration's executive orders.
And is some of the money that was taken out of permanent supportive housing being put into transitional housing? And if so, about how much?
So, I will say, I don't want to jump ahead. This has not been fully worked through yet. So, this is just only a possibility of what could happen. Green is going to come down once we get that new NOFO released, which has not been released because the government has been shut down.
Okay, what a mess. Thank you.
Do we have any further questions for Director Ross? Okay. I am still in the bargaining stage of your departure. So happy for you. We do miss you, and I promise I'm going to stop calling you, asking you questions. No, I'm, yes, I will. We all do. We're so happy for you. Thank you. That was sobering. No further questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Castleberry is in attendance. Okay, we will now hear from the Chief Executive Officer of the Adams Board. CFO Harrison, welcome.
Good afternoon, members of county council. My name is Felicia Harrison. I am the interim Chief Executive Officer for the next week and a half, and then I will return to my full-time job of Chief Financial Officer of the Adams Board. So, I do have a presentation here. The Adams Board is tasked with planning, funding, and monitoring the local system of mental health and addiction, prevention, treatment, and recovery services. We, and I guess I should just go forward, yes. We do that by enforcing our mission. So, first, I wanted to go over some statistics for you. So, in 2024, which is the last full year that we have for statistics, we served a total of 206,000 clients. This includes mental health, SUD treatment services, prevention, recovery support, and crisis services. We are on track to serve similar numbers in 2025. So, this next slide shares with you some ongoing and emerging trends. Mental health needs continue to intensify. People are deeper in crisis when they first seek help. On the positive side, reduced stigma and better awareness are encouraging individuals to seek help. Opioid and fentanyl deaths are declining thanks to harm reduction and treatment efforts. New challenges do demand our attention. Alcohol use complications are rising sharply, possibly driven by social acceptability, easy access, and increased isolation. Cocaine and meth use are resurging disproportionately impacting African-American men. Poly-drug use, meaning multiple drugs together, continues to be a challenge, and individuals may think they know what they're taking, but sometimes they don't. Co-occurring disorders are becoming more complex. Drug-induced psychosis and other severe symptoms require longer stabilization. Across all areas, we're seeing higher acuity and greater service intensity needs. Our community needs to maintain and enhance comprehensive behavioral health care, and this includes four major pillars of services for clients. Those pillars are prevention, treatment services, recovery supports, and crisis services. No one service is a complete response to behavioral health issues. Now, start looking, start talking about our 2026 budget. So, reductions in funding levels from federal, state, and local funding sources in combination with our spend-down of the cash balance that we had over the last few years has led us to a position where we are reducing allocations of our provider agencies by 20%. These reductions we are making across our network are a shared sacrifice that keeps the entire system intact rather than protecting some areas at the expense of others. We're not eliminating any category of services in the 2026 budget. We are choosing a path that protects all pillars with limited resources. So, the next chart is a little difficult to read because it's a little small. But what it shows you is a financial summary, and it's a comparison between our funding in 2025 and 2026. It's a comparison of revenues and expenditures for those two years. The 2026 budget is based on reduced revenues from all sources. We have received cuts from federal, state, and local sources. And in order to pass a balanced budget for 2026, we will be utilizing our cash balance. The majority of funds continue to be used for direct services for county residents. The reductions to provider contracts is in response to rightsizing the Adams Board so that we are no longer relying on that cash balance that we had over the last few years. A little more in-depth about the cash balance. So, by the end of 2025, we are projecting a $7.4 million cash balance. If we look at our projections for 2026, our revenue coming in is just over $63.6 million, and our expenses in the budget that we have, we have proposed, excuse me, is $71 million. By the end of 2026, our cash balance will be $42,000. The last slide that I have is talking about our expanded crisis continuum. Our crisis continuum was the focus in our budget presentation to council last year. We're happy to have delivered on some projects to expand the continuum. Those projects include the Step Up/Step Down Residential Facility managed by Signature Health at Orca House, the Care Response Pilot Project managed by Frontline Service, and Behavioral Health Urgent Care capabilities within the county. We have been actively working to improve our crisis continuum with state support and evidence-based models to inform decisions. The Crisis Center addresses gaps in the continuum and is the next step in the process to enhance our crisis services. The Crisis Center is anticipated to open September of 2026. The Crisis Center will include Crisis Intake and Receiving Center, a crisis stabilization unit, and detox services. So, those are all the slides that I have. Are there any questions?
Far to the Madam Chair.
Through the Chair to CFO Harris, are any of the cuts to the providers who spoke today at public comment based on any performance or anything like that? Or just a shared across the board?
Right now, it's just shared across the board.
President Miller.
Just two questions. In the past, the Adams Board has talked about reducing the number of providers to try to focus on the highest quality and simplify the administration. Is that still a goal? Or is your plan, at least over the next couple of years, to stick with the current list of providers?
So, what we are planning to do, we're doing an analysis of the entire behavioral health system in 2026. This will help us to identify any duplication of services or any underperforming agencies. This will also help us to identify any services that don't meet our four pillars. And we're, you know, so we're going to look at that study to help us to inform decisions moving forward. So, there's a possibility there could be a reduction in providers, but more likely a reduction in the number of programs that we're currently funding.
And the other question is simply on your reported projected income of $63 million for 2026.
Yes.
Does that presume the, the current level of county subsidy? Or does it presume the somewhat lower subsidy that's currently in the proposed budget?
It presumes the lower amount that includes that $4 million reduction.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Johnson there, Mr. Hauser.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director Harrison, I kind of think we're probably all still smarting from just a few weeks ago. But, but my question is, with the ending of Metro Health, assuming that's the case, unless something changed, I'd be happy to know, with the emergency room, PsyED, will there be a duplication of that emergency room through your efforts? Or is that still, or is that still going to be a space that's, a gap that's unmet?
When we heard about the closing of the, the planned closing of the PED or psychiatric emergency department, you know, what we are starting to do is determining how to meet the needs of those clients that Metro was seeing at the PED. So, it's all still new and all still fresh. So, we're still working through that.
Do you see that as a roundtable discussion of all the parties? And wait, figure out some way for Metro to still participate? Or find some other source or something? How do you see it playing out?
We have, we are trying to meet with Metro to determine what's the level of, how, you know, what that status, that census was looking like so we could determine what clients would still need to continue receive services. So, we're, you know, reaching out to be collaborative on that.
Thank you.
Mr. Hauser.
The Chair says, Director, I just have one question. I see that the, for the Crisis Center, it was one-time capital funds. I know the county supported the Crisis Center. I do believe ours was one-time funding as well, even after three years. My question is, is there a long-term plan developed or being developed to keep this Crisis Center continuing to be funded past the three years after the county support?
Yes, we are, that's part of what we're looking at when we're looking at the whole system through the consultant that we've engaged. That is part of our continuing concerns and what we're working on.
Okay, appreciate it, Director.
Further questions? Mr. Gallagher.
Welcome.
Thank you.
When's the new director come in, in a week?
November 10th.
Glad to hear that we're going to start evaluating the dollars that are going out. Do you know when the last time that was? That we evaluated the dollars?
The last time that we, we probably have never done a full comprehensive evaluation. What we do, we do have, um, our data, the people in our department that work in data, and we have our program people and our finance people. And how we come together on the budget is to look at all of those different sections when we're determining budget allocations. But it will be good to have an outside eye looking at the entire system to help us do a full analysis.
What's disturbing to me is so much money goes out, and this isn't you that I'm talking about, but previous directors, and not all of them have, uh, it's like a wink and a nod. Money goes out, does it work? Nobody knows. And that's not just with the Adams Board. That's with just about everything we do. And there's nobody up here, nobody over there that could tell you that if there's duplicate services, and maintaining the emergency for the psych would be somewhat duplicate services, although the Crisis Center will not have an emergency for, for, for psych. They're going to rely on the very institution that they screwed. Not they did, but this county did, the Metro Hospital. Who's going to do the best they can to keep providing those services? So this new director, when, when it, male, female? I don't know who is it?
The new director was announced. We did a press release, so it's not a secret. It's Jason Joyce. He will be joining us on November 10th.
Okay, he's got a, he along with us has a lot of work to do. Because I suspect there's, and I think you suspect that there's a lot of things going on here where we can consolidate and start saving money or appropriately placing dollars where they're most needed. The recent month or so, we haven't done that. We've done just the opposite. So we're not done. We're not done by, by a long shot. But there's, you know, we have our adjustments to make. Nothing's perfect. There's finite dollars. We'll do the best that we can. And sadly, there are people in this room just, just aren't going to get funded. And I get that, but we're going to have to be delicate in how we approach this. But I, I saw how you were placed in your position, and I appreciate the, the work that you've done.
Thank you.
So, thanks, Lyman.
Adam Chair. Mr. President.
I would just remind everybody of the Adams Board's testimony that you just presented that, uh, that crisis is becoming a bigger problem and that people are coming into crisis in, in higher, uh, higher stages of acuity. And, and, uh, the, uh, the Crisis Center is specifically designed to fill gaps in, in, in the crisis services and, and, uh, and help make it so, so that people don't have to wait for weeks and weeks to get an appointment for, for treatment. And, and so I, uh, I recognize we're in a very difficult funding environment and, and, uh, and, and that, uh, that there's going to be challenges. But I just note that, that, that the Crisis Center, if it works as we intend, is, is going to fill very, very important needs in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
To echo those comments, um, and I've said this to you privately and publicly, the Adams Board is the convener. We're going to meet all the needs, and that, that includes the psych ED as well as this excellent work, extremely supportive of these 40 beds. And, but there's an entire continuum of work that needs to be provided. And we don't want to simply play whack-a-mole with one service and, and leave another service. And it takes everyone getting into the room and figure out who's going to step up, who's going to step back, who's going to walk side by side, and make sure we deliver all of the services. We watched Charity Hospital close their psych ED, and then we put millions towards Metro Health, and, and now, now we're putting dollars here. Let's take a moment and figure out how we all can do, get everything done that needs to be done. It takes everyone coming together, and I see no better partner than the Adams Board as the convener of all of these parties.
Thank you.
I thank you for all you've done.
Thank you. Yes.
Anyway, are there any further questions? Harrison. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll hear from the Office of Early Childhood, Invest in Children interim director, Swiatek. Welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Alyssa Swiatek, director, associate director for the Office of Early Childhood and Invest in Children, but currently serving as interim director while our director is out on maternity leave. Thank you for this opportunity to come before council today and for your support of the work that we do. Invest in Children's mission is to leverage the public and private sectors to connect, coordinate, support, and prioritize a strong network of program and services to benefit young children, families, and caregivers across the county. With your support and investment, we are extremely proud of the outcomes we have achieved for children and families in Cuyahoga County over the past 26 years. I will start first with our team. As you can see in this organizational chart, we have 10 FTEs plus a fiscal specialist supporting our office through HHS Shared Services. Since we last presented to council, our office has had many staffing changes. Of the 10 filled positions shown in the chart, four are new to our team in the last two years. Jacoya Gordon, our Infant and Early Childhood Mental Health Program Manager, Megan Walsh, our Family Support Program Manager, Eric Jett, our Data and Evaluation Manager, and Carly Chakaki, our Senior Communication Specialist. This is an expert and dedicated team, many of whom are with us here today. They are deeply committed to our work on behalf of our youngest citizens and their caregivers, and in working hand in hand with our lead partner agencies to ensure effective early childhood services are available to all families in need of support. As you see, the majority of Invest in Children's funding goes to contracts with their lead partner agencies for programs serving children and families prenatal to kindergarten. Our continuum of early childhood supports includes child and parent support and services like home visiting and our family space program, early childhood mental health, both in the home and in the classroom, as well as additional services to ensure childcare programs are equipped to include children with varying levels of needs, the childcare system and our universal pre-kindergarten program, and our administration of the child fatality review process. These difficult cuts proposed have been made strategically across our contracted programs to protect the continuum of early childhood supports with limited resources. We are committed to working closely with our lead partner agencies to continue to support both systemic and programmatic investments in the early childhood system, identifying efficiencies where possible, and safeguarding critical direct services to young children and their families in Cuyahoga County. Looking ahead to the next two years, there are a couple of items on our radar that will continue to shape our work. Invest in Children undertook a new strategic plan in 2024 that runs through 2027. One important strategy of this roadmap that I wanted to lift up for you here today is the reconvening of Invest in Children's Partnership Council. In 1999, when we were founded as the Early Childhood Initiative, the Partnership Council was critical to our role as a public-private partnership and reflected our commitment to strengthening the early childhood system in our community. The Partnership Council was discontinued in early 2020 and has not formally reconvened. But by bringing together a multi-sector group of system partners from social service and nonprofit agencies, philanthropy, and local government in the first quarter of 2026, Invest in Children will be well-positioned to support a strong or well-coordinated early childhood system to elevate the pressing needs of this vulnerable population and help our local early childhood system navigate challenging times ahead due to workforce challenges and the impact of federal and state funding and/or policy changes across the early childhood system. Like many of our other social service sectors, the early childhood system has faced significant workforce challenges and has yet to recover following the pandemic. This impacts both our childcare programs, but also in our early childhood mental health and home visiting programs, resulting in lower availability of early learning seats in our community or wait lists for children and families to receive critical supportive services. Invest in Children continues to work with our partners in early childhood and the philanthropic community to identify and implement strategy, strategies to strengthen the early childhood workforce. We are currently in the second of a third year, three-year Infant and Early Childhood Mental Health Workforce Implementation Plan to strengthen and expand the IECMH workforce in Cuyahoga County with our co-partner, the Center for Community Solutions and Fiscal Partner, the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio, with the support of many philanthropic partners. We also continue to advocate for innovative workforce pipeline-building strategies for our early education workforce through our participation on various initiatives, including Early Matters Northeast Ohio, which is a budding coalition of economic development leaders, workforce, uh, corporate, and, uh, early childhood experts coming together to identify how we connect early childhood to economic development. Childcare is not just good for children and families. We know that there is an economic impact and hope to continue to build out the understanding of the importance of our childcare system more broadly beyond early childhood and beyond families. Finally, the ever-shifting landscape of state and federal policies, many of which you've heard already, has had a significant impact on our partner agencies across all sectors of our work. Although Invest in Children does not receive any state or federal funding, we remain committed to our daily work in supporting our lead agencies and understanding these changes, their impact to early childhood programs and families, and working collaboratively to find solutions to ensure high-quality early childhood supports are accessible for families in Cuyahoga County. Thank you for your time. At this time, I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. Do you have any questions for the director? Yes, we do. Councilwoman Hanwell.
Through the chair to interim director Swiatek. These cuts were proposed by each department. Out of the budget reductions your team are presenting, I just wanted to clarify, were the cuts across the board of all your contractual agreements?
Of the 14 total contracts that we have, there are proposed cuts to 12 of those contracts.
Two of them did not receive any budget reductions?
That is correct. That is for the child fatality review. Uh, our lead agency is the Cuyahoga County Board of Health, as well as Case Western, who does program evaluation.
So child fatality review, which I don't think was a lot, a lot of funding in there, and the Case Western Reserve?
That's correct. The proposed contract value for a child fatality review is $120,000 per year, and our, uh, program evaluation contract is for $130,000 a year.
And in terms of the universal pre-K, can you explain to this council? I know, I believe I had met with Director Roerman before maternity leave. What is the status of that financial balance in the universal, uh, pre-kindergarten fund?
These cuts of 11% of the total contract value are made based on underspending in the current UPK contract cycle, which runs August 1st of 2024 through July 31st of 2027. Because there has been attrition in terms of UPK sites, it is also very difficult to predict the number of scholarships that will be needed, especially in new UPK sites, where we don't have any historical patterns to look back on. Therefore, the proposed cuts are really based on the underspending through this current contract.
Okay, and that totals $839,000?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, seeing there are no further questions, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We now hear from Director Robin Martin, Family and Children First Council. Welcome.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Robin Martin, Director, Family and Children First Council. Just a quick overview of who we are. Because our office, we're not actually the council. We are staffed to the process. The council is made up of the directors of all the major child-serving public systems across Cuyahoga County. We were formed in 1993 under Governor George Voinovich to help families that had children who had multi-need, and they were involved in multiple systems so that we were coordinating services for them. We work to help prevent relinquishment of custody for children and young people who need services, but they are not at risk of abuse or neglect. Under Governor Taft, um, the Child Well-being Initiative was formed, which for our county is a combination of the Office of Early Childhood, Invest in Children, serving zero to five, and Family and Children First Council, serving children kindergarten through graduation. So our budget is a mix of state and local funding. Service coordination in the past has been a combination of local and state funding, but now it is strictly state funding. Our state funding was cut by 59% with the launch of Ohio Rise, and a lot of the families we were serving moved over to Ohio Medicaid. The state also realized that their funding formula had not been reviewed since 2007. And based on our reduction in population, we saw a reduction in our dollars. So our office is divided into three areas. So that service coordination is primarily state. We also have child adolescent needs and strengths assessments that we do for the Division of Children and Family Services. This is revenue generating, and it is based on the Family First Prevention Act of 2018. We do assessments and court packets on behalf of the Department of Children and Family Services so that they're able to access their 4E dollars for residential placement costs. And then we have youth development, and our reductions are in the youth development area. And so you see here, we took a reduction in several of our contracts. I know today you heard from College Now regarding the college tours. Their contract is for college tours out of state. We still encourage our young people to go to in-state schools to still have that experience. It may be a day where they're not spending the night, but they still have an opportunity to be on a college campus. And we also want to explore some other opportunities for young people who may want to go to college but are not ready. There are some programs related to that. And we also want to look at more trade school opportunities for our young people. The rest of the programs listed here, well, I'll go one by one. Values in Action, that is, youth internships. We saw that there may have been some duplication between that and closing the achievement gap, and closing the achievement gap was a larger program. For Beach Brook, we have two contracts for comprehensive sexual education, and we decided to, um, stop funding the Beach Brook contract and look at Planned Parenthood because we were seeing, again, with the state evaluation of us seeing a reduction in population, that there were less young people in the program. Some of our s, high school children were not really participating. And so we would like to focus on middle school. to focus on middle school. And the one provider can serve what the two providers served if we look at the program based on the evaluation. For service coordination, we were planning to implement a respite program this year, and that's on hold until further notice. There's a 20% cut in CTAG. We had, we released an RFP earlier this year, and we had room for nine buildings. We received applications, well, responses where we could do five buildings and, well, no, it's seven districts, five districts, seven buildings. And so we had room for two extra buildings, and that's what the cut represents, the two buildings that have not been RFP'd yet. And for Starting Point, it represents our out-of-school contract, and we're going to work with the team over at Starting Point to ensure that the children do not feel these cuts that is as minimal as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Do you have questions? Councilwoman Conwell?
Question or comment? I don't know yet. Through the chair to Director Martin. The CTAG contract has been back and forth over some years, and we've been expanding every year. I don't remember the inception. Councilman Jones stepped out, but... So to be clear, out of the five districts, we currently have seven buildings?
Yes.
And two were going to be added on if the funding impact wasn't what it was?
Correct.
So we're not, okay, so we're not really cutting anything, we're just not moving forward at this time?
Correct.
And the starting point out-of-school time, does our HH funds, HHS levy funds fully pay for that, or is that part state as well?
It's fully HHS funded, levy funded.
Okay, so to be clear, the out-of-school time will take 110, 220. What was the total amount for that, for that contract?
1.65 million.
Okay, okay. So that, giving the audience a picture that it's a cut, but it really, as you stated, should not impact the children that are, or the parents that utilize that service for their children?
We're going to work to make sure that it's minimal.
And you will contact me if there's any issues that you have?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Robin, good afternoon. All right. Well, I just want to follow up on that to get a little clarity around the cuts around CTAG, again, 20% reduction. How are those going to be spread out? There about five to seven schools?
Seven.
Seven that are getting the monies? How is that reduction going to be distributed?
So right now, the second RFP we were going to release for the other two buildings, we're not going to be able to release that RFP, but we have contracts with the existing seven buildings.
Existing seven?
Mm-hmm.
How would they be reduced? Will some lose funding, or will all keep funding and just get a reduction? Will there be any elimination? I guess that's the word I'm thinking of.
No, not in 2026. I cannot speak for 2027, but not in 2026.
Why not plan out for both years? Whether there'll be elimination? I have that hanging over my head.
Well, if you notice, on the reduction list, there is 110,000 the first year and then 120,000 the second year. So if you look at the 300, no, I'm sorry, I'm looking at Starting Point. If you look at the 20%, the 200,000 covers the two buildings that we have not RFP'd for this year. I'm not sure how we're going, we're going to have to figure out what the 200,000 looks like in the second year, but what we'll do, as we did in other programs, is it'll be a reduction. I don't want to eliminate any individual schools, if I can avoid it.
Thank you. Any further questions for Director Robin Martin? You have no further question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Okay, we'll hear from the Office of Reentry, Director Simeon Best.
Good afternoon to the President, the Vice President, to the Chair, and to the entire council body. I am Simeon Best, Director of the Office of Reentry, and just thank you for this opportunity to speak to you about the biennial budget 2026 and '27 for our office. So the Office of Reentry, just as a reminder, exists to support the successful transition of individuals returning from incarceration and coming back into community. Our mission is to ensure that people coming home have access to the resources, programs, and support systems that they need to reintegrate into the community and be successful. We want our residents really to know that Cuyahoga County aspires to be a place that supports life after criminal justice involvement, and that we are a county that believes in redemption, restoration, and the power of opportunity. So as you can see, the budget is from 2023, and then the proposed, 2023, '24, '25, and then the proposed for, or recommended for '26 and '27. The Office of Reentry is 100% levy funded, and the recommended budget for '26 and '27 does allow us to keep our core programs for the people that we serve. And as you can see, there's been some changes in our staffing. We're happy about that. In 2023, we only had four staff. 2024, we were able to increase that to eight. We did lose a staff member earlier this year, so we're down at seven. But I do want to highlight, we have two reentry resource navigators. These are two individuals who are assigned to the county jail. They have a presence in the county jail four days out of the week, and they're meeting with individuals or residents who are going to be coming back to the community soon. And so they're making sure that they're linked to various services, programs, and providers, so that they have a plan when they come out, and they know who to reach out to. So I know this says elimination. I just, I think I used the wrong word. We're going to just postpone these new initiatives. This is what we're not going to be able to do, and that is the Green Belt Project, which was a transportation initiative, trying to really make sure that we support individuals who are coming out, especially those who may be from another county, and they need to get back to wherever they live or another state. We're also pausing on the justice housing. We were looking for intermediary, someone who would oversee our eight-point housing plan. We're going to pause on that, but it's critical because, you know, those housing needs for justice-impacted individuals are ever-present. And then lastly, our grief counseling, we were, we've been asked by the community, hey, you know, we need more grief counseling opportunities or availability in the community for the individual who is justice-impacted, also their family. So we're going to pause on those initiatives. We are actively exploring other ways and alternatives to kind of push these forward, but this is where we are for right now. With that, I thank you. Any questions?
Ms. Conwell, and Ms. Simon?
Yes, through the chair to the Director. So as I stated with the previous Director, each department, he had got to look through their budget and see what needed to be eliminated or what they could eliminate. So it sounds like from this elimination of new initiatives, that was the only thing that was impacted. Everything else was going to move forward. In these elimination of new initiatives, was the funding there already and put in during our annual budget cycle, or how are we eliminating the new initiatives without touching your current budget?
So the funding was there in the beginning, and so when we were asked to reduce, we looked at what we hadn't actually put an RFP out for, and so that's how.
So you had kind of set that aside in moving in the direction of new initiatives?
Absolutely.
And how did you plan on continuing funding for these new initiatives if they had moved forward?
Well, they would have been in our budget, and so we would have been able to, you know, move those forward because they would have been there.
And so that's a total of, what, 400,000?
Yes.
Thank you, Director.
You're welcome.
Ms. Simon?
Thank you so much. I just want to make sure you're going to keep your staffing levels, where they're at now?
Yes, yes. The seven will stay.
The seven?
Yes.
And with regard to transportation, which was a new initiative that unfortunately can't, at least at this point, continue, that was for transporting from where to where and how often?
So people coming out of the jail who may have been from another county and needed to, because the RTA pass will only go but so far, so looking at how to get them back to wherever county they came from.
So would those other counties be able to help with that? I mean, since they're residents seemingly of a different county, shouldn't, is there an opportunity there to talk to the commissioners?
There is.
I know there's opportunity to talk, but whether they're going to?
Right, right.
Have we explored that?
Not yet.
Not yet?
This was going to be a pilot as well, so we were going to kind of work through, you know, the case.
Okay, maybe that's something to look at.
Absolutely.
A miracle can happen. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I always think on those opportunities, like for partnering with the faith community. We do it so well when it comes to the food pantry. We provide the money for the food as taxpayer-provided at the Cleveland Food Bank, but the churches use their volunteer ministries to collect the food and distribute it in the community where they're already present. So that partnership takes an incredible financial strain off of us and the logistics as well. They're closer to the community than coming to this building to get your food.
Right.
But the county has so much more to offer than just food, you know, your services, those type of things. So when those initiatives come, I find, I imagine that it can be less costly when you genuinely have a continued conversation with the faith community around that same temple. Why can't a church from those counties where they're from be partnered with and encourage them to come in and pick their own residents up, and there'll be, you know, the tabs to wrap around, so there's a shared interest?
Right.
In that? So those type of conversations, so I just wanted to throw that out there for free.
Definitely noted, definitely something good to consider.
So Simeon, my other question was around, although the budget has, the future initiatives are postponed, your existing directives, give me a sense of, we haven't sat down in a while, but what will you still be able to do in terms of your critical services and not being impact-packed?
Absolutely. So we will still be able to operate the North Star Reentry Resource Center, so that's through Oriana on 55th. We'll still be able to have our GED, a basic education program that's inside the jail and also the community-based correctional facilities. We'll still also have our legal clinics, so this is a free service to individuals who are justice-impacted, they'll be able to go there. And we still have our Going Home to Stay guide, you know, that is still present. I'm trying to think if I'm missing anything. And we have a Rapid Reentry Housing Fund that's also operated through North Star, so that individuals who've gotten out within a year need some just stabilization when it comes down to where to stay, first month's rent, utilities, things like that, we still have that in place.
Do you continue to monitor or get data around the social entrepreneurship piece that was created by this council 10, 12 years ago with LMM? It is the Central Kitchen. That was a social entrepreneurship initiative that came out of the Office of Reentry. Active, it's growing.
Right.
They don't receive any more money other than that initial funding. Their revenues come from the sale of the food, but Central Kitchen continues to prosper. I'd like to know if there are any data?
So I'll let Simeon speak to this as well. Again, David Merrim from the Department of Health and Human Services. I'm also recognizing that Maria Fosha is here, the President and CEO of Luther Metro Ministry. So I want to recognize that program was launched prior to Simeon's time in this role, and in fact, at the time, I believe he was the Voting Rights Coordinator for Cuyahoga County, so that most likely predates him. I'll let him speak to any of the other elements that he is aware of, but I do want to recognize LMM continues to be an invaluable partner as we look at workforce services, as we have the Central Kitchen. And unless Simeon has something else to add, you know, I think there's also the opportunity to have Maria Fosha come forward and address your questions.
Okay to use a lifeline, not a problem. Yes, love to hear from her.
Good afternoon, through the chair to the Councilman. Could you repeat your question and comment, please?
The Central Kitchen?
Please?
Maria Fosha, President and CEO, LMM.
The Central Kitchen, the funding for Central Kitchen was provided by this council 12 years ago. One-time funding, obviously to start training the reentry population and mentoring them or apprenticing them in food services as you sold food to the homeless shelters, and they would have a mentoring time. And with that, they'd have the skill set to either work in the food industry, or even start their own if they so desired. One-time funding, as a result, it was a larger dollar amount initially, but you received no more funding over the last 12 years for it, and your revenues came from the sale of the food. So what I was watching in particular were the number of individuals in the reentry population that were being mentored. The more they get mentored every year, the greater the return on our dollars from that initial funding 12 years ago. So I was just curious if our Office of Reentry continued to collect annual data, your profit loss statement, your balance sheet, you know, on the Central Kitchen to know how our return on investment was progressing.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying and also acknowledging the success of the program. So as I recall, from those early days, $180,000 was seed money. I know you were a part of that. Thank you to see that Chopping for Change program. Over time, and we have leveraged that to the tune of about $4 million in the last, since 2016, since that was started. Graduated 400 students of those, a majority are reentry folks or currently incarcerated. Much of that, again, leveraging was through federal dollars, through earned income, as you mentioned, through social enterprises. So we are struggling, though, with that program and the ability to continue that program at the level we have in those early years where we were serving upwards of 80 people a year. So we're, I think, our current enrollment for women that are currently incarcerated at Northeast Reintegration Center is somewhere between 15 and 20 students, but we're still making an impact, trying to figure out how to sustain that going forward, and that's after a couple of bids at the state level for ODRC funding as well. But it is, it's shown success, less than 3% recidivism, so we know these programs work, and we're starting, and the county is supporting a new venture in building maintenance and repair for janitorial maintenance positions, which are also in demand in our community. And so not a full pivot away, but kind of scaling the Chopping for Change in the way it can be with funding, but moving into some other in-demand workforce initiatives that will continue to serve currently incarcerated and reentry populations. I don't know if that answers quite your question?
It does, but again, I say that's a feather in the cap of the Office of Reentry.
Yes.
Its information, I think, should be housed in your office of what your office has done, even though it was your predecessor, so that we see the success, because there's, again, no reason why, especially when you're talking about budget cuts, something that was so inexpensive that created such a return, why your office should not be replicating, finding more opportunities like that, you know? Low cost, we have having a positive impact on so many lives, and we don't want to lose that institutional knowledge that, you know, the director's changing. So instituting that, I think, would be a win for everyone.
Thank you. Through the chair to the Councilman, and we do want to acknowledge a great partnership with Director Best for reentry week and month and all of that as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Gallagher?
Now, we have reentry from Cuyahoga County Jail?
Yes.
And the state system?
Yes.
And we pick people up from state institutions?
No, 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 we don't.
I came in late, I'm sorry.
No, we don't pick, I think you're referencing the transportation initiative we're talking about. We were talking about those who are released from the county jail, and they're coming back out to the community, and they may be from another county. And so I think we were talking about how do we get them back, you know? They don't have a funds or, you know, RTA will only take them but so far. And so that was the concept.
Oh, okay, okay. Because there was a time, long time ago, and I don't know if it's still going on, is that we were... still going on, is that we were kind of the open joke down in Columbus, because we were providing all these services to people leaving prison, and they're coming here, because there's a lot of free stuff here. Like, I don't mind helping our people out, but I don't want to help out Summit County and everybody else. So do we have a check on that?
Yes. I mean, so I will say that as we work with the ODRC, we go to some of the prisons, and they hear about all that Cuyahoga has to offer.
Oh, yeah.
We've heard them say, oh, I want to go there.
Trust me, we are a joke. They encourage guys to come up here.
Yeah, yeah.
And I never could understand that, because, again, we don't have a lot of money. And what we provide is, you know, just getting somebody to learn how to read and write is a win. And I know that's being provided through education, but you're not getting the brightest and the best, and we're trying to take care of our people, and I hate to say our people and their people, but it's true. So you got to put a lock on that. I mean, if they move here, there's nothing you can do.
Right.
But to encourage people, when you're getting out of a state institution to come here for free stuff, which really isn't free, because somebody's paying.
Right.
So I would hope that you focus on that.
Yeah. And just to say, we do not promote, you know...
I know we, I know we don't, but they, down in Columbus, they're running around telling anybody, because they don't like us down there. I don't know why. You said something about legal. We provide legal services. What's that?
So Case Western has a legal clinic, just for justice impacted individuals, helping people with exhumement, record stealing, child support modification, things like that once they are released.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Castleberry?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair and Director. Thank you for your presentation. I just want to get back, just on some of the elimination of the new initiatives, and I think Ms. Simon had brought up your staffing. So did any of those proposed projects require any further staffing, or was that all going to be done by outside groups? How is that going to...
Done outside. And we do a lot of, you know, contracting. So we are a funder for the most part. And so our two navigators are really our first time having this direct service, being a direct service provider. So that's how it's...
And thank you. And if our fortunes should change, is there something that you would like to keep on the back burner, something you'd like to put in place down the road?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Hauser?
Director, just before we let you go, I know me and you have had prior conversations around fair housing legislation. To Councilman Jones' points, I think we need to be creative, and I think that type of legislation wouldn't cost anything. Can you just give us, from your standpoint as Director of the reentry for Cuyahoga County, what would that kind of legislation mean countywide to the reentry population?
Absolutely. So we would look at fair housing or not discriminating against individuals who have a background, who have a criminal record. That would be, it's such a need in our community. And so if we can develop the right language to include into, you know, the existing discrimination policy, that would be a win for all of us. Because what we're doing is we're essentially releasing people from jail and incarceration, and then they have nowhere to live. And that creates other problems. So to increase public safety and just to give dignity back to justice impacted individuals.
Thank you, Director.
Other questions for Director Best?
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Before I turn it back over to our President, I want to highlight our agenda for Monday, November 3. We'll hear from general government and supportive services. We'll hear from county council, the Office of the County Executive, the Sheriff, Information Technology, which includes Consumer Affairs. We'll hear from the Treasury, the Office of Innovation and Performance, Department of Purchasing, and finally, the Department of Equity and Inclusion. I want to thank everyone today for their time, our colleagues for their thoughtful inquiry. And I'll turn it back over to the President at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Turner, for conducting our budget hearing this afternoon. All meetings of the Cuyahoga County Council are open to the public under the Open Meetings laws. Under that law, council may go into executive session during a meeting for specifically authorized purposes. During executive session, council confers outside the hearing of the public. Council may not make any decisions about any matters in executive session. All decisions are made in public. This afternoon, council will go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending or imminent court action and possible purchase or sale of real estate. During this time, our live stream will be down, and we ask all those not specifically needed for the executive session to remain in council chambers. Council members will convene in the adjacent Committee Room A and will re-enter the meeting once the executive session has ended. Is there a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending or imminent court action and possible purchase or sale of real estate?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. It requires a roll call.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser? Mr. Hauser is away at the moment. Ms. Simon is away at the moment. Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney is away at the moment. Mr. Castleberry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher? Mr. Schlepper?
Yes.
Ms. Conwell? Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Council President Miller?
Yes.
The motion carries.
The motion has been approved. We will now adjourn for the executive session, but we will have a very short break, and we will meet in the Committee Room A at five minutes past the hour.
The executive session has concluded. We are back in session for the committee of the hall. Is there any miscellaneous business?
Nope.
Hearing none, the committee of the hall is adjourned and the regular council meeting will begin promptly.